I want to welcome everybody. We'll go ahead and get started the meeting if everybody would go ahead and stand up. And we're going to say a prayer and a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening just thanking you for yet another day. Lord, we thank you for each and everyone that it's assembled here today. We ask that you bless this county council. We ask that you bless our community, bless each and every employee under Talbot County Government. Father God, we ask that you continue to lead, guide, and direct us in every decision that we make not only here this evening, but in the future. Lord, we thank you and we praise you. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of our God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, go ahead and get started on the agenda. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. Council's had the agenda before us. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda, council? Okay. Hearing none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. Next on the agenda is the minutes. And the council has had time to take a look at the minutes of May fourteenth before us. Is there any changes of the minutes?
No.
Okay. Okay, any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? I'm sorry. I lost track. Sorry. Okay. Hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Disbursements of June eighteenth and June twenty-fifth. Council's had a chance to take a look at that. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to that? Okay. The chair moves that the disbursements be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, first on the agenda tonight is a certificate of recognition of the Talbot Agricultural Education Center turning sixty. So you guys, would you like to come on up? Madam Secretary, would you like to go ahead and read the certificate into the record, please?
If somebody would like to speak for the group.
There we go. Just we're sitting the seat there. Then we'll all come up for pictures. If a couple people could sit in the chairs and then go stand behind that, that would be great. Okay, no problem. I can see that. There you go. There we go. That was very easy. Very easy. Okay, Madam Secretary.
Certificate of recognition, the sixtieth anniversary of Talbot Agriculture and Education Center. Whereas two thousand twenty-four marks the sixtieth anniversary of the establishment of the Talbot Agriculture and Education Center located at one oh six five nine Heiners Lane in Easton. And since its founding in nineteen sixty-four, the mission of the Talbot Agriculture and Education Center has been to strengthen and preserve our rural Talbot County culture by providing a safe, convenient, and economical gathering place for citizens of all ages and backgrounds to showcase and learn from our agricultural heritage. And whereas from nineteen sixty-four to nineteen eighty-two, the Talbot Agriculture and Education Center hosted a one-day four-eight showcase. And since nineteen eighty-three, has been home to the Talbot County Fair, now in its forty-first year. And whereas, the Talbot Agriculture and Education Center is an independently owned nonprofit organization managed by both youth and adult volunteers from the member organizations, including Talbot County four-H, Eastern Lions Club, the Tri-County Ruidetan, Talbot County Farm Bureau, and Eastern Future Farmers of America, FFA. And whereas, each year, the Talbot County Agriculture and Education Center is host to four-H meetings and events, agricultural meetings and trainings, and community events, and is available for rent for parties and weddings. Now therefore, we, the county council of Talbot County, do hereby congratulate the Talbot Agriculture and Education Center on its first sixty years of service to the Talbot County community and wish them continued success as they plan and prepare for the next sixty years and beyond. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this twenty-fifth day of June in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-four.
Good job, Madam Secretary. Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Second. Okay, we got a motion second to go ahead and approve the certificate as presented. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay. Your turn. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you for recognizing the Ag Center.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
I can. My name is Linda Brown, and I wear a couple of hats in this community. And the Talbot Ag Center is one of them and a four-H leader for the past fifty years. So we're very excited for the youth to have a place to gather and to learn and educate and do all kinds of wonderful agricultural activities for the community. We're very excited that the Ag Center was able to acquire a nonprofit status. So that helps us in gaining some support, and we appreciate your support beyond your belief. It really makes a difference when we have support from our local county government. So we appreciate that. We are looking forward to our fair. It starts on July the eleventh, and this is your personal invitation to attend our opening ceremony, which starts on Thursday, the eleventh, at four P.M., followed by a fantastic fashion show and a barbecue pork dinner. So you don't want to miss that. And each day just gets better. So we invite you to come out and see our facility and join us if you will.
That's great. That's great. Yeah, so introduce yourself.
Danielle Farice. I am the treasurer for the Ag Center and echo everything Ms. Linda said.
Okay, well, that's great. Okay, council?
Yeah, Ms. Linda, you know you are treasured in this community and all the great work that you do. So, you know, congratulations on the sixtieth year, and it's always hot doing the fair. But I managed to get out and get those good funnel cakes out there. That is like my favorite thing for the fair. But congratulations, you know, the youth are so certainly blessed to have you and the work that the four-H does. So thanks for coming in. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd like to reinforce what's been said. I was fortunate to attend the annual banquet for the FAA, which was wonderful, and it's great to see you continuing and the education for the youth continuing to keep farming and agriculture a big part of our community because it's so important. So thank you.
I always look forward to the fair and look forward to attending the opening ceremonies. Thank you very much. But I realize that that is just the culmination of the year, the time that you get to show off everything that you're doing with four-H, and clearly that is an ongoing, that is a year-long effort. And you're having an impact on lives here, shaping, character shaping, shaping the future of these young folks. So thank you for all you're doing along those lines.
Thank you.
Yep, yep. And just to add with my colleagues, really appreciate all you guys do. You got a lot of people. We got Mel back here that puts his heart and soul in a lot of this stuff, you know. And I think, are you going out this year?
I'm engaged.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought. That's what I thought. So, and like I say, with all the youth and the kids and stuff, it's really a pleasure being out there and every year going out there and all you guys do, all you do with the farm animals and everything, it's really special. So appreciate you doing that every year and looking forward to this year, that's for sure. So come on up, we'll take the pictures.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, that was great. So, okay, next on the agenda is a request from the public schools for a budget transfer. So Sarah, you want to come on up?
Good evening.
Good evening. So this is my yearly trek to the council where we come and talk about category transfers that we see a need for. And you should have had in your packets last week a request giving some detail as to the different categories. As you know, you approve a budget for us each year, and it's by category. So we have roughly ten categories that we currently use of the available categories. And we find we have some savings and some and some opportunities to get ahead on some expenses on others. And so one of the reasons we come to you at this time of year is because we're wrapping up our year this week and also because we recently got our final budget appropriation from you. We had an opportunity to work through the difference between that appropriation and what we had put in our budget and figured out how to sort of manage our FY twenty-five budget. And some of that hinges on us being able to do some prepayments in FY twenty-four. So that is really what I'm here to talk to you about. I'll go here and just kind of look at this list. Basically, we have savings in three categories, and I'll kind of hover over them with the mouse. Instructional salaries, we have a savings of about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which seems like a lot. It's a little less than three percent of that budget. It is a lot in dollars. I mean, don't get me wrong. I don't take that lightly. But we did have savings in instructional salaries. We also had savings in special education of about four hundred thousand dollars. That is from that very hard-to-predict, non-public placements. We're placing a small number of our students in specialized educational environments. Some of them can be extremely expensive, and we had some savings in that area. You know, that could be due to one child, two children, three children. It just kind of depends on the circumstances when we're setting our budget and then what actually comes to fruition. So we had savings there. And we had also anticipated needing to transfer a hundred thousand dollars out of our operating fund over to our capital projects fund, but the white marsh roof came in significantly under budget. We did not need to make that transfer, so we had some savings. So that is where our savings are coming from. What we would like to do with those savings is disperse them among some different categories. For example, we need twenty-five thousand dollars in administration to cover some additional legal costs. Actually, our legal costs are very much in line with prior year legal costs. I think I was just very optimistic when I was budgeting and had budgeted a lower amount. We need forty-five thousand dollars in our mid-level administration. That's our category that covers all of our principals, assistant principals, and curriculum supervisors and directors. We had one transfer, so we had an overage, will have an overage in our salary line, and then want to do some additional professional learning, get that committed to right before the end of the year. We wanted to do an additional eighty thousand dollars in other instructional cost, and that's really additional instructional software from next year's budget. We'd like to prepay that this week. Seventy-five thousand dollars in student services, same thing. We'd like to prepay some software. Also, we are charged with instructing all students, whether they're able to come to school or not. So we have a certain number of students that, due to various health reasons, stay home or are in the hospital. We service those students. Those costs have gone up and will be over budget this year. So we need some additional money to cover the cost of our teachers that are handling that work. By transferring five hundred thousand dollars into transportation, we can prepay many of our bus lease payments that would have been in our FY twenty-five budget. By transferring three hundred and fifty thousand dollars into our plant operations department, we would be able to cover, we have some overages there. We do have some repairs, but we'd also be able to get a little bit ahead on some of our supplies and cover some additional contracted services we'd like to commit to this week to get done over the summer. We'd like to transfer in a hundred thousand dollars in plant maintenance to cover some overages. And we would like to transfer into fixed charges, six hundred thousand dollars. So we have, the OPEB contribution had been in our FY twenty-five budget, so we want to prepay that. We actually want to put some additional savings into, from this year, into an OPEB contribution. And, you know, we're just trying to make headway there because we're very far behind on that liability. And then we want to do some prepaying, some pre-funding of our health insurance. So that is really our request.
Okay, sounds good.
I certainly want to applaud the prepayment. I mean, with county budgeting, we do the same thing. We identify expenses that are eligible for prepayment, the bus leases. I particularly want to applaud you for doing the OPEB payment on that. The, and even though it's a smaller item, the software all makes sense. Whenever we're transferring out of instructional salaries, it always raises an eyebrow because, of course, that savings comes from vacant positions. These are faculty positions that weren't hired, that therefore weren't in the classroom. And what can you, certainly this has been a tough hiring environment. It's been a tough hiring environment for everybody. It's been a tough hiring environment for education. So the fact that some of these positions went unfilled is hardly surprising. But, and particularly with math and science, I understand that that's been difficult. But I'm curious what the plan is to fill those positions for the coming year so that we don't see that loss in that direct student contact.
Sure. Well, I think we have a few things we're doing to address it. We did have previously in a grant-funded position, and now, starting FY twenty-five, a locally funded position, a director of recruitment and retention. So we have someone fully focused on recruiting and retaining. And that person will be part of the H.R. department, reporting to our new assistant superintendent for support services and something. Who, and so we'll have all those people sort of in place by July fifteenth. And July fifteenth is the date by which the teachers need to let us know if they're not going to be returning. So we're, summer's a huge, you know, sort of onboarding time. We were actively interviewing. I mean, it's hard to get a conference room up at the education center right now because there's so many interviews going on. So I think we're trying to do that. I think a little bit of the savings are a reflection of us having grant availability this year. So, you know, we don't ever want to use, to not use grant funding. So if money frees up in a grant, and it's appropriate to charge a teacher or part of a teacher's salary there, we're going to use that money. So sometimes that happens, like a change in a grant throughout the year where some money frees up. So that's a, you know, a little bit of that.
Yeah, I was going to jump in. I mean, not to take advantage of any other county's misfortune, but coming from a superintendent's meeting, hearing of all of the layoffs some of my neighboring counties are doing, we are, you know, actively reaching out and seeking for those positions, seeing of the interest to come here. Secondly, what Sarah alluded to, the July fifteenth, we're just waiting because that is the date when teachers officially can let us know what their intent is. However, we have a lot of dominos taking place right now, a lot of movement physically and within our staffing for the summer. And so I'm just excited about what the fall holds for us with some new positions that we have and some shifts within the organization so that we can tend to our priorities.
Okay.
I think just one other thing, you know, we talked a lot during the budget cycle about bringing those new mentors for new teachers on and how, what we've seen is that's been very helpful for retention of newly hired staff. So we're hoping to continue to see that trend and would fully expect that.
Yeah, and I also just would like to thank you for your partnership, starting early with our conversations about what we're doing, being transparent with the needs that we have to meet. So just appreciate that and looking forward to that in the future.
Okay, good.
Thank you. It's comforting to know that you're being intentional about ensuring that those positions will get filled, that you have some, the manager in place to recruit and retain. We know that the success of the schools is one of our most powerful economic development tools. That when the schools succeed, it helps all the other businesses, everybody else who's looking to hire in this community. It helps them succeed as well. So thank you and understand that the broader community importance of that.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher.
It's quite clear that these are challenging times for you all. And I have to commend you for your perseverance and your diligence to address these issues which confront us. So thank you. Much appreciated. Thanks.
I will echo what my colleague says. Certainly, thank you for being proactive and looking at those schools that have had layoffs. One question that I have that's completely off from the budget is, is it true that Eastern Elementary lost about twenty teachers this year?
No.
No, because you said July fifteenth.
July fifteenth, and I'm hoping by July, I'm hoping by July fifteenth, there's not a mass exodus, but that number is not that high that I recall.
Good.
Yeah, that would have been brought to my attention.
Good, good, because, yeah, somebody had mentioned that, and I said, well, while they're here, I'm just going to go ahead and ask the question. Good, okay. All right, good. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, guys. It's great. It really is great working with you guys. And we've had a great year with you and working with the budget. Really appreciate all your hard work, that's for sure.
So we need to move for approval?
Yep.
I will move approval of the categorical budget transfers as requested.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next on the agenda is introduction of legislation. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read the bill into the record, please?
A bill to authorize the replacement and improvement of the cart bridge at the ninth hole of Talbot County Hog Neck Golf Course.
Okay. Martha, you want to come on up?
Good evening, council. Martha Sparks, Finance Director. This was somehow missed in our numbering for our first, our first introduction of capital-enabling legislation. So we are presenting this to you tonight. We also will come forward to council with more capital-enabling legislation once the Talbot County Public Schools, the school board has decided those capital projects that they wish to select for the one point five million dollars in funding that council has approved for them in the FY twenty-five budget.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, there'll be a show of hands.
This is sponsored by Callahan-Lesher-Milky and Hayth.
Okay, Madam Secretary, could you announce the bill number in public hearing?
Yes, this will be known as Bill Number fifteen seventy-five, and the public hearing will be on Tuesday, July twenty-third, at five thirty P.M.
Okay, Martha, thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, we're running a hair early. You want to do a couple county manager things?
Certainly. Thank you, council. Under county manager report this evening, we have board and committee appointments. The first one is the Animal Control Board. We're requesting the reappointment of Carla Wieland Cherry to serve on the Animal Control Board.
Okay, their motion?
I'll move the appointment of Carla Wieland Cherry.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
The next is the Golf Board. We're requesting the appointment of Dana Egert to serve on the Golf Board.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to put somebody on the, what's her name?
Dana Egert.
Dana Egert.
Dana Egert.
Yep, on the Golf Board. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
The next is the Talbot Family Network Board of Directors requesting the reappointment of Bernice Oriana from the private sector and the appointment of Katie Fox to the, representing Talbot County Public Schools on the, if approved, the Talbot Family Network Board of Directors.
I'll move both appointments to TFN.
I'll second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
And finally, under board and committee appointment, this is the Tourism Board. We're requesting the appointment of Commissioner David Wojciechowski, who is a Talbot, I'm sorry, St. Michael's representative to that board. I tried real hard not to mess that name up.
I'll move for the appointment of David Wojciechowski.
I'll second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
The next item will bring Brian Moore up. Brian, Facilities Maintenance is requesting council approval to award a contract to Flu Hardies Electric in the amount of sixty-five thousand three hundred twenty-four dollars to upgrade the electrical service for the transformer serves the main and north wing sections of Talbot County Courthouse in the state's Attorney's Building. There are sufficient funds in the budget for this project. And Brian is here to add anything additionally or answer any questions relative to this request. Good evening, Brian.
Yes, evening, council. Brian Moore, Talbot County Facilities Maintenance and Roads Department. Clay kind of summarized that we, this is a project I really don't want to do, kind of forced to do, but it's necessary that we have to do as a project to replace the courthouse chiller that's ongoing. It's, we're coordinating this project as two because the town of Easton is upgrading the electrical metering in the courthouse so they can remotely read the meter. And the meter is going to be moved from the courthouse basement to the transformer location. In the process of summarizing and scoping the project out, they are concerned about the electrical feeds from the transformer to the building are not sufficient during heavy loads. They've put some recording devices on it, and when the chiller is running at full capacity, which is like a ninety-degree day, that the loads are close to the point of overloading the system. The old meter had more capability to handle that. The new one will not. So as part of this project, we're going to be replacing the electrical feed from the transformer, which feeds the main courthouse. which feeds the main courthouse, what I call the north wing in the State's Attorney Building. It will be, have to do some coordination because the power is going to be cut to those buildings to do the work. And, uh, that's the project in a nutshell.
Okay, any questions, Council?
Questions? This, this is, uh, as, as usual, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder.
Yes, yes, we solicited prices and, you know, a lot of detail went into getting the prices and, uh, there's a lot of moving parts and availability of the equipment. So we want to go ahead and get moving on it because there's a lead time on some of the equipment.
Well, it's, it's always nice to, to see that, uh, that a local firm gets the contract being that, that low bidder, so thank you.
Okay, Council, um, is there a motion?
Two moved.
Okay, we got a motion second.
Second.
Yep. Um, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Next, Council, would you like me to do another one?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, next, Council asks Brian to locate the Emergency Services Director and Geneva Shaffler, Emergency Management Coordinator to come up. Uh, the Director of D E S requesting council approval to award a contract to Tetra Tech in the amount of sixty-two thousand fifty-nine dollars to rewrite the county's continuity of operations plan. This project will be paid using emergency management preparedness grant funds. And both Geneva and Brian are here to add any additional information or answer any questions relative to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Clay. Good evening.
Good evening.
So I think Clay's pretty much summarized it. Uh, we're requesting, uh, permission to procure using, uh, one hundred percent grant funds for the continuity of operations plan for county government. So make sure that we can stay operational if something were to happen.
Yeah, okay. Any questions, Council?
No questions.
I will just say, this is, uh, this is a timely effort because we did learn a lot from, uh, through the COVID experience. Um, in one instance, everybody just, I think everybody in their plan decided to go to the community center for their alternative location, and that wasn't very well coordinated, was it? So there's a lot of lessons learned, uh, in the last few years that we'll commit to, uh, doing things different in the future. So it's good.
Okay, that's good. Okay, we got a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay, there you go, guys.
Thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Let me keep rolling.
Is it one more or two more?
Two more.
Yes, yes, go ahead and get you done.
Okay, Martha, uh, would you please come forward? Martha, um, you're Finance Director. She's going to be, um, presenting to you for your approval, fourth quarter budget transfers, uh, and, and specifically the remaining contingency funds. Um, and I'll let her have the floor to continue with that.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. Martha Sparks, Finance Director. This is the second fourth quarter transfer request that I've brought before council. Um, this, uh, is in accordance with Section Six Fifteen, the Talbot County Charter, which states that transfers between agencies of the county government and within the same fund of the current expense budget may be made only during the last quarter of the fiscal year and only on the recommendation of the county manager with the approval of council. So the listing that I provided to you, um, focuses on a budget transfer of the remaining contingency funds to a contribution to the county's investment in the Maryland Association of Counties, M A C O, um, other post-employment benefits, O P E B Fund. Talbot County provides post-retirement healthcare benefits under the Talbot County Retiree Plan. Investment in the M A C O O P E B Fund mitigates the liability associated with providing future benefits to our retirees. There's also an adjust, uh, an adjustment related to moving some additional operating appropriations between categories similar to what the school board just, um, came to you and asked for.
Okay. Any, any questions, Council?
No questions.
No question, just a comment. As with, as I, I commented to the, the school, uh, the school personnel, uh, I want to applaud the, the move to, uh, continue to fund our O P E B applications. These, uh, this will ensure that we have, uh, funding for our, our retirees' healthcare benefits and, uh, uh, not a, not a, an uncertainty in that category, paying as we go, as we always have had to do in the past.
That's correct. It is a very good mitigation plan for us.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the fourth quarter budget transfers as proposed.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Martha.
And finally, thank you, Martha. And finally, Council, we ask Ray Clark to come forward, your county engineer. Ray's here to seek approval to enter an easement agreement. Um, and I'll let him, uh, share, uh, the request and I'll fill in anywhere.
Counsel, this is, um, this is basically an easement agreement, uh, with the Nolans there on, uh, Mount Pleasant, and this is to allow us to directional drill, uh, for the Resolution Two Fifty project for sewer. And what we're going to do is go across their property, you know, below grade, uh, probably be averaging about seventy, seven to eight feet, and then we'll drop down to about forty feet, and then we go onto Broad Creek. And then we come up on Scott's Lane. So we ended up having to work out an easement agreement with the Nolans. Ultimately, that's, they have two lots, we'll be providing them basically with sewer to, to their two lots, um, as well as, um, you know, the necessary force means and whatnot to tie them in once they're ready to move forward with that.
Sounds good. Any, any comments or questions?
No questions.
Just congratulations on, I know that this is a really important step. Uh, we've got a lot of constituents down in the Bosman Nevet area who are waiting for these, these hookups and that this is a vital link to make that happen. I know that you've been working hard to, to get to this point, so thank you for your efforts and congratulations.
My staff has helped out, and we will thank also the county attorney as well, so we appreciate it.
Yep.
Uh, I'll, I'll move to approve the, uh, easement agreement.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Just want to recognize Ray for all his work. I know Council certainly recognizes, but he puts in more than forty hours a week to accomplish the many tasks at hand. So thank you, Ray. Uh, Council, that completes your county manager report for the week. Thank you.
Okay, good job. Okay, so, uh, we'll go ahead now and, um, start the public hearing. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and, um, uh, do the first one, please? Resolution, uh, Three Fifty-Eight?
Resolution Number Three Fifty-Eight, a resolution to formally close Seager's Corner Road as a county road and authorize the conveyance thereof to the underlying fee simple owners.
Okay, that's great. Mr. Thomas, you want to go ahead and do a little overview of, of that, please?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, so, um, Seager's Corner Road is a very short road, it's about less than a quarter mile long, uh, that is an alternate connector for, uh, Lewis Town Road and Covey's Landing Road. And this road is in poor condition and is going to require significant expense to, um, be properly upgraded and maintained to the status of the county roads. Um, so this resolution was brought forward, uh, at Mr. Moore's request, uh, and it proposes to abandon the, the road and convey the underlying land to the county, to the property owners on either side.
Okay, that sounds great. Okay, okay, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the floor. Um, you'll have three minutes to speak about this and five minutes if you're representing an organization, um, at this time, okay? So, um, anybody over here to my left, want to come up and speak about Three Fifty-Eight? Okay. Over here to my right, anybody want to come up and speak about Three Fifty-Eight? Okay. It seemed like nobody's coming up, you know? So, all right, then, so, um, okay, at this time, um, we can go ahead and close that, Madam Secretary, can't we?
Yes, you can.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close that and then, um, at this time, where it's ready to be voted on, correct? We can make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so is there a motion?
We, we don't, we don't need a motion. I think we can, we can discuss if needed and you can call for the vote. This, this is, uh, this seems to be an uncontroversial matter.
Yeah.
To, uh, to close this road. I think it won't cause any serious inconvenience to anybody. We have not heard any objection to it. Uh, I, I, I'm certainly satisfied that this is, uh, that this is the right way to go for, for the county. And thank you to our, our department head for, uh, uh, proposing to do this and, uh, and save the Roads Department, uh, some, some funding, some effort, uh, and, uh, and, and costs into the future.
Okay, sounds great. There's a second?
Second, well, there's no more.
Oh, just a second, okay. All right, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, um, Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and, uh, read, uh, Three Fifty-Nine into the record?
Resolution Number Three Fifty-Nine, a resolution to place a question on the ballot at the November two thousand twenty-four general election to amend Section Six Fourteen of the Charter of Talbot County to allow but not require the county council of Talbot County to add up to one cent per one hundred dollars of assessed value above the revenue cap for an additional five years beginning July first, two thousand twenty-six.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Um, Mr. Thomas, you want to just give us our overview of, of what we're trying to achieve here?
Yes.
Yep.
Uh, pursuant to Section Six Fourteen of the county charter, um, as of July first, two thousand twenty-one, revenues derived from property taxes included in the constant yield tax rate certification issued by S. Stat shall not increase more than two percent from the previous year. In two thousand twenty, the council adopted, uh, Resolution Two Eighty-eight for the purpose of placing a question on the two thousand twenty ballot to allow but not require the council to add up to one cent per one hundred dollars of assessed value above this revenue cap for five fiscal years beginning July first, two thousand twenty-one. This ballot question was approved by the voters and it will expire, uh, as of July first, two thousand twenty-six. So the Resolution Three Fifty-Nine proposes to extend this, um, for an additional five years beginning July first, two thousand twenty-six.
Okay, great.
Uh, and, uh, Mr. Callahan and I have, uh, an amendment, uh, to, to introduce to this one, which, uh, simply extends this, uh, this extension, uh, from five years to seven years. Uh, and the reason that I am offering this amendment, and I spoke with Mr. Step, the, uh, the originator of, of this resolution about this, the existing provision is expiring now so that we can place this on the ballot this year in a presidential election year, which is when we have an uncrowded ballot and no county council members are on the ballot, which allows us and the sheriff to campaign to express the importance of this. And we've seen how important this measure is for funding public safety. And by adding another two years, rather than having this expire in a council election year, a gubernatorial election year, this will extend it to the next presidential election year so that we can deal, should this need to be renewed another time, uh, it can be done when there isn't such a crowded ballot.
Okay. Okay. So do we have to, do we, do we, do we need to go ahead and vote on the amendment?
Yes, you'd be introducing the amendment, and then I think you can proceed to the public hearing and then vote on the amendment and then...
To do the amendment first?
Just introduce it.
Okay.
So we just need a show of hands?
Show of hands of introduction. Yep, okay.
So introduced by Callahan, Lusher, Milkie and Hayth.
Okay. So now we get ready to open.
Now we're open to the public.
Yep, yep, okay. At this time, I'm get ready, open to the public hearing on Three Fifty-Nine. Um, I'll give you three minutes for, um, individuals and five minutes for an organization that wants to come up and talk about Three Fifty-Nine. So I'll start over here to my left. Anybody here to the left? I see Martha over there, yeah, yeah. I know she wants it, you know? I know she wants it, you know? Yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, 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 okay, yeah, yeah.
So Council, I thought this would be a good time to revisit for the benefit, for the public's benefit, the, um, great assistance that these revenues have provided to the county for, um, providing and augmenting, um, public safety expenditures. So I did a result, through the budget process, I did a review of the revenues, and I just looked at, um, additional positions that we've been able to add to public safety as a result of this. Um, and in that analysis, we had a total of twenty-six, um, positions that we were able to add. We were able to add another paramedics crew, another, um, E M Ts, also, um, S R Os, nine-one-one operators. We've been able to, um, improve our recruitment and retention of our sheriff's deputies and our Department of Corrections by giving, by helping them to get them the supplemental, um, retirement programs, of cores and LEOPS for our sheriff's deputies and our correctional employees. Um, and each year, as we've added those positions, um, we've, we've spent those revenues and the councils have voted to approve even more funding and support for, uh, public safety and equipment and vehicles and increased funding to our volunteer fire companies. They, they got a, a very, um, good increase this year to help support them in their efforts, to provide their services to, um, Talbot County citizens. So I just wanted to say and voice as the Finance Director the support. I see where these revenues are being spent. And they are being spent in the areas that the public have, have supported.
Thank you, Martha. It's very important for the public to know that they're, they're doing good things to help us, that's for sure. Um, anybody else here on my right want to come up and speak? Okay. Right here, at this time, I'll go ahead and, um...
Mr. Council President, if I might?
Yeah.
I don't know if it's proper for me to be able to speak as county manager, but as your former Emergency Services Director, long-serving paramedic and emergency manager, um, it's been proud for me to serve the community. Um, and in this role, I'd just like to share my perspective. Everything that Martha said is true. In the last number of years, this, uh, this additional funding has allowed us to, uh, see the best of our services. I mean, we've seen, we've stabilized our workforce, we've been able to attract, um, quality individuals as paramedics, correctional officers, deputy sheriff. We've advanced in technology, we've enhanced our coverage. So it, the funding has been used to make sure that we have the best of the best and that we address one of our core pillars as a community, and that is public safety, health and welfare. So, um, as a citizen, as a proud member of our community and, and, and in service to the community, I support, um, this measure. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Stamp, I appreciate that. Okay, at, at, at this time, do we, um, keep, keep, just do the roll?
I think this is, this is eligible for vote. Uh, so we, the first thing to do would be to, uh, vote on the amendment.
Yep, okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Okay.
And then, then we, then we move the, uh, the full, the amended legislation now for a vote.
Okay, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Okay, sounds great. Okay. All right.
I just want to thank Council for that. I think that that's a really important move and, and a vote of confidence in, uh, the future of public safety that we, uh, that we advance that to the voters.
I would agree.
I agree.
I would agree, yep. So Jess, is there a sign-up sheet or?
I guess nobody has signed up this evening.
Nobody, nobody signed up, okay. Okay. All right, um, Council comments, Mr. Lusher?
We heard earlier this evening from our Talbot County Agriculture and Education Center, which, which sponsors four H, and and does, as I said earlier, that that really important youth enrichment and character building. Our own County Parks and Recs Department is, this is summertime, and we are running summer camp programs out at the Talbot County Community Center. The, I just came back from a week of scout camp with the, with the Boy Scouts. Yet another one of our communities. There are so many organizations in this community that are doing that kind of youth enrichment, youth character building, youth programming of one sort or another. This is the season when that becomes so important as schools are out, and I just wanna thank all of the, all of the volunteers and all of the professionals in the organizations who are engaged in doing that. You are doing really important work in this community.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Lusher.
Yes, to sort of sequence from that, I just wanted to bring to the public's attention that the Eastern Airport is sponsoring a summer learning activity program for kids ages twelve to sixteen on airfield design, paper airplane, aircraft characteristics, model rocket construction, and then a model rocket launch. For more information, you can contact easternairport.com, or you can look at our website, and the information would be there, but I think this is a great opportunity for students to learn about aviation. It may be a career.
Absolutely. Just to echo my colleagues, as Mr. Lusher said and and Ms. Milkie, this is the time for our young people that are out of school right now to take advantage of the summer enrichment opportunities. So, I encourage families and parents to do so during this time of year, but also next Thursday is Fourth of July, so I encourage everyone to have a great Fourth, and be safe, and celebrate with your, your family and friends and and your loved ones.
Yep, and I'll, I'll say the same thing with my colleagues. I just wanna make sure that we all wanna have fun at Fourth of July, but, you know, unfortunately, it's been really dry out there, so we just wanna use common sense out there with fireworks and stuff like that. We did unfortunately put a band on for 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 burns and and fireworks, but like public, public, like personnel fireworks, not, not the municipality fireworks. That's gonna happen. So, we just really want to be safe for the firefighters. We want everybody to have fun, but just use a little bit of common sense, and 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 let's wait for some rains and stuff, and then we can go, go back to our fire pits and and stuff like that, so. Just wanted to throw that out at everybody, so let's just be safe, and thank you, staff, for all you do. And I did wanna welcome Connor, too, from the Star Democrat. You're doing a good job, and we really appreciate all your hard work, and, you know, it means a lot to us as a council when you're writing about us. You know, there's, that's, that's touchy sometimes, what we say, what we don't say, and you're doing a really good job, so I really appreciate you being here and all the good work you're doing. And the same with you, Sarah, back there. Keep an eye on him, okay? Keep an eye on him, okay, so. But, but other than that, I appreciate everything. Mr. Lusher?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, July ninth, beginning at five o'clock P.M. The council will be convening an open session at two thirty P.M. for a work session on the proposed Frederick Douglass Bike Trail in the county, and then adjourning into closed session, as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene, as noted?
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks a lot. I appreciate everybody being here.